Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting in Monday's study session. It's Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is eleven A M. And all members are present. Item number two is review of the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Special District Three Council Meeting Agenda. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you and good morning. This is the special meeting agenda. It is the District Three Evening Meeting. It will be at Camp in the Camp Arnold Gymnasium that's located in Eatonville. There is one item, one proposal on your consent agenda for introductions scheduling, and that is two thousand and twenty-three, three, two. This is ratifying a collective bargaining agreement reached with the Service Employees International Union Local nine twenty-five. You'll be referring this to Rules and Operations, and you'll be setting the final on this for September fifth. And you'll note under D, the addition of two grants here. These were time sensitive and needed to be on this agenda. And Mr. Bokey is prepared to discuss those shortly. Under other items, you'll also note a motion to rescind the final hearing date on two thousand and twenty-three, thirty. This is the two thousand and twenty-three update to the Sustainability two thousand and thirty Pierce County's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan. So the final is being rescinded, not being reset yet at this time. And then moving to section six, under Messages from the Executive, you'll see the return of ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, which was vetoed. There are no proclamations, ordinances, or resolutions, so we'll move right to section ten, Other Business. There are a number of items here. Councilmember Kruebel, Krueger will start with the welcome and introductions. Then we have the Camp Arnold Success Stories. Next is the Information and Update Regarding Pioneer Farm Museum and Ohop Indian Village. Then we have the Eatonville Area Update with the Mayor of Eatonville. We have Community Forest Interaction and Overview. And then finally, we have the Vision Two thousand and fifty with Puget Sound Regional Council Staff. And that is your agenda for the Special District Three Evening Meeting.
Thank you. Are there questions about our in-district meeting tomorrow evening? Customer Cooper, anything to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us. Well, there are two grant reports that Ms. Long noted that are in the packet and noted for consideration. Mr. Bokey to brief on these two grant applications, please.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Paul Bokey, Council Staff. There's two grants in front of you. The first one is Lower Puyallup Watershed Community Resilience Project. This is a very large grant. It's listed as forty-six million dollars. It's a federal grant from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight. It's Pierce County is requesting funds to address ecological restoration and community resilience in the face of climate change through reestablishing freshwater tidal and floodplain wetlands, improving infrastructure to allow natural riverine processes to occur, addressing water quality concerns, and reducing flood risk in vulnerable communities. So these are all areas in the lower Puyallup. A lot of them, a lot of the words are, a lot of the creeks that you're going to hear here are ones that you have approved for grants in the future. This are very common names here. Clear Creek Floodplain Reconnection. It's eighteen million, estimated cost eighteen million. Swan Creek Channel Restoration, two and a half million. Swan Creek Culvert Replacement at sixty-fourth. This is a Surface Water Improvement Plan Priority Culvert Number One. It's nine million dollars. Rhodey Creek Water Quality Improvement, three million. Culvert Replacement. And it's not listed there as to where, but it's the eight twenty-five, five million dollars. Diru Creek Water Quality Improvement, three and a half million, and Culvert Replacement, five million dollars. And we do have representatives from Surface Water Management to answer your question. I believe it's Kathleen, Kathleen Berger and Sean Goldsmith.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bokey or Department Staff? Customer kitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Just due to the size, is each one of these a separate grant? Or is it a forty-six million ask, one and done?
Let's turn it over to Department Staff. I think you hopefully understand the question. We're asking for one large grant here with a bunch of projects tucked into this larger grant. Can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, thank you. The grant itself is a large grant, so the upper limit is seventy-five million. The lower limit is twenty-five million, and these are all individual projects that we've bundled as one grant application. They're all within close proximity to each other, all within one area of the lower Puyallup on the left bank, and all similar in scope and purpose and overall function.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, customer Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question for staff. Is, will this cover all the work that needs to be done with this grant? Or is it going to go out other monies, or is it going to cost more than the forty-something million?
Department Staff?
Thank you. It is expected to accelerate these projects. They're the best estimates that we've got at this time. It's they're the, Helmut Schmidt is here too and may be able to speak a little bit more clearly on that if he's able to be unmuted. But as far as we know, these are the estimates for the projects to be completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're moving Helmut from the Surface Water Management Division over.
They're on now.
Thank you. Helmut?
Hello, this is Helmut Schmidt, Pierce County Surface Water Management Floodplain Services. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you well.
Right, so this is, this forwards a lot of that work. It's not going to, there's a lot of work to be done. I think estimates for work in the lower Puyallup exceeds three hundred million, so this is a step in the right direction. This is definitely moving. So it, what's exciting about this is there's a lot of momentum right now in the lower Puyallup with some other partners getting grants, and this is definitely a step in the right direction. It seems like a lot of money, but it's a lot of, a lot of things at play.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
As far as funding, is there, and I have to read through them all, is there specific matches that we need to come up with? Specific to receiving these? Understanding that these, this is part of the work of a lot more work that needs to be done, but if we get these in, is there a dollar amount we have to commit to immediately?
So my understanding is there's no match to this. Is that correct, Kathleen?
Correct.
There's no match to this grant.
Yeah. And if we could, before we get it to final, not overly detailed, but just kind of a, a map of kind of where each of these projects are. If we could get that to review and just kind of that way, we can see how much work we're actually getting done. So I know we've had an opportunity that we've had open houses out in the area to review some of the work. So I think some of us might be familiar, but if just between now and final, if we could just get a map of where these impact, where, where we'll be addressing. Oh, and now I remember my third question. This is from what I heard described almost fully within the Puyallup Tribal Reservation. What partnership do we have with the Puyallup Tribe on this grant or on these projects?
So the Puyallup Tribe is actively involved in all of our planning efforts and is very aware and supportive of the work we're doing down there. So we are also pursuing some grants on some other projects, and I believe recently they just got some awards as well for some culverts. So it's a lot of work going on down there.
They're aware of all this and have
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Customer Merrill.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Some of my questions were answered, but the, the one question that I did have is Clark's Creek involved in this area, geographic area that you're looking at, the lower Puyallup Watershed?
Not in this grant package when you
Sir, they are Rhodey and Diru are in the Clark's Creek Watershed, so not Clark's Creek itself, but Diru and Rhodey Creeks, and they're in the Clark's Creek Watershed.
Thank you, Kathleen. Right, so Rhodey and Diru Creek drain into Clark's Creek above Stewart Road, so.
Okay, so there is no funds available to look at what is happening on Clark's Creek then, as far as the flooding goes?
Projects that are written into this grant that are likely to be implemented within the active period, which is between next October and five years out, address water quality issues on Diru and Rhodey, and also streambank stabilization or culverts. And those projects lead into the overall health of Clark's Creek because those tributaries drain into Clark's Creek itself.
Correct. That'll help manage the sedimentation that comes off the plateau that drains into Clark's Creek. So there'll be a, a benefit to Clark's Creek from those two projects.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Berger, we realize this is a NOAA grant, and thank you for pursuing this big grant to pursue our work program here. So again, acknowledging it's a NOAA grant, do you, what, what is the name of the grant program under NOAA? I don't see that listed in the materials.
NOAA Community Resilience.
Thank you. And for members' information, per Vice Chair Campbell's request on, on this for for a map to visually see where we're pursuing grant application. I have asked Mr. Bokey to work with Department Staff going forward for maps for each and every grant that, that comes forward so that we can have a an aerial map to visually see what, what, we're in the county, we're talking about any grant and any other supporting visuals, whether it's a and hopefully, these are all materials that Department Staff already have in place for what they're pursuing, just to give that visual understanding to council as we're reviewing these. So I know Mr. Bokey has made that request to Department Staff as these are being teed up, and that'll get in motion here as these come forward. Go ahead.
There is a map in the, in the application itself. It might be too high a level, so I believe it's on it's in, it's about halfway through the application on page five. It shows where all the projects are.
We'll, we'll thank you. Yeah, it's not in our packet, so we'll let you work with this. It's okay. There's a lot going on. We'll let you work with Mr. Bokey to get that over to us in advance of tomorrow. Let's move, so that will be scheduled for approval at tomorrow's council meeting. Mr. Bokey, the next grant application?
The next one is for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is to perform the necessary study analysis and design to determine the optimal intervention for three culverts located on Pioneer Way. So we're in the same general vicinity. These culverts are at Squally, Swan, and Clear Creeks. And the scope of this project will explore how to modify the culverts to maximize Fish Passage for Endangered Species Act. Listed fish improve water quality through reduction of sediment transport, enhance climate resilience and mobility for heavily trafficked areas, roadway Pioneer Way. And this includes, and these culverts are high priorities with our tribal partners. This is also the NOAA Grand. Staff is here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Questions by members about this grant application? Vice Chair Campbell?
Two things. Only it's only nine hundred and fifty thousand. It seems so small on the heels of the forty-seven million, but it's nearly a million dollars there, so good work on that. If we could also get the, I assume there's a map in the probably application process, if we could get a copy of the map of this one too, just so that we can visually understand where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about this grant application? Not seeing any. This one too will be on council's agenda for tomorrow for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also note that we received a grant application on Friday afternoon or something that even is, I think, even a shorter timeframe. I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but I will send it out to you in advance. And if the council is okay with it, I can bring it to the Tuesday study session, and we'll have to have the same staff, I guess, show up to discuss that.
Thank you.
Is it, is it for work in the
Don't know.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, that is everything for tomorrow's council meeting agenda. Thank you to Department Staff for being available to answer our questions and for the follow-up to our questions that I know you heard. Let's move to item number three, Review of Committee Agendas for the week. I'm going to turn to Ms. Long for a briefing.
All right, thank you. So this afternoon at one-thirty, you do have a Public Safety Committee meeting. There's one proposal and one discussion item. The proposal's two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-eight, and this is relating to pet shops regulating the sale of dogs and cats and amending Chapter five point two four of the county code. This has a September twelfth final hearing date. Next on your agenda is the Marine Services Division Report, and that will be with Sheriff's Department Staff. Tomorrow, Tuesday, beginning at nine-thirty, you have a Health and Human Services Committee meeting. There is one proposal and one presentation. The proposal is R. Two thousand and twenty-three, one-twenty-two. This is approving the Human Services Department and Behavioral Health Advisory Board's Funding Recommendations for the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund and Liquor Tax. And this has an August twenty-second final hearing date. The presentation is on the Alternative and Crisis Response Update. This will be with the Sheriff's Department and Multi-Care folks. At noon tomorrow is your regular Tuesday study session. Usual agenda items except one presentation under other business, and that is the Pierce County Interns Presentation. And then again, at six-thirty is the Special District Free Evening Meeting. On Wednesday, the sixteenth, beginning at one-thirty, you do have a special CDC meeting. There's one proposal and a couple of presentations. The proposals are two thousand and twenty-three, one-twenty-five. And this is acknowledging receipt of the Citizens Advisory Board's recommendation for funding the purchase of Conservation Futures Properties. This does not have a final hearing date set yet. There are three amendments, and I know Mr. Krueger is prepared to discuss those shortly. You have two presentations. The first is the Park Natural Resource Lands Program, and the second is the Park Policy and Rates for Low-Income Youth and Families Use of Facilities and Programs. And both of those will be presented by Park and Recreation Staff. And also on Wednesday, beginning at nine-thirty, is a Flood Control Zone District Executive Committee Meeting. So those are your committee meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Before we have Mr. Krueger brief on three amendments proposed to the Conservation Futures Bill, are there any other questions other than that item about committees for the week? Not seeing any. Mr. Krueger, I'll ask you to brief on Amendments one, two, and three to the Conservation Futures Bill.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good morning, Council. There are three amendments that have been proposed for the committee meeting on Wednesday. The first two are, are fairly technical amendments, and I'll walk through them. And then the third amendment is substantive. So the first amendment was sponsored by Councilmember Mello. If council recalls, the council updated the Conservation Futures Code back in, in January of this year. The proposal that came up with Conservation Futures is a resolution. The department used the same kind of standard sections in the resolution as they have historically done, and it doesn't reflect the changes to code. And so what this amendment does is it just picks up those nuances in code based upon your work back in January. And so as an example, the first section would be modified to indicate that the, as an example, the, the board's recommendations includes conditions for purchase and use. And so when council takes action on the resolution, there will be specific conditions that are tied to the project and for the future use of the property, and that's described in the, in the, in the resolution. Another example is we're, we're talking about funding projects, not purchasing properties. Council created the opportunity for conservation easements to be acquired clearly in the new code update. And so we're kind of getting away from a perception that the council will only be funding property acquisitions, recognizing that some of these projects that are going to be acquired will be easements. And then the final item indicates that the funding that's available for the Conservation Futures purchases are tied to the biennial budget. The monies will be available throughout the biennium unless council readopts a resolution eliminating a project, or if the project sponsor withdraws a project, it would no longer be eligible. So that's number number one.
I'm going to ask you to pause there to see if there's questions about media amendment number one. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Krueger, one of the things that we addressed in the ordinance last, like, earlier this year was the timeline in which projects are funded. I think in the past, the department has gone in ranked order, and we discussed that maybe it would be more efficient and more timely, especially for properties that were more at risk, that, that they be purchased as they're available, or can you speak to that a little bit?
I, I can, and you're, you're channeling amendment number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't apologize. It's, it's a good question. It's good. I go ahead and talk about amendment number two?
Yes, please.
So amendment number two gets to Councilwoman Denson's point. One of the exhibits to the resolution had traditionally ranked projects, one through however many projects there are, and it indicated the score of the project. And historically, projects were pursued sequentially, so the top-ranked project would be acquired first, and then Department Staff would move on to the second-ranked project and so on. So council modified the code in many ways. One of the things that you modified in code was early adoption of the resolution indicating which project would be eligible for funding, so project sponsors could get started prior to council's work on your budget. Once the budget's adopted and becomes effective after the first of the year, all of the funded projects become available for acquisition immediately. And so the project sponsors that are more aggressively working towards closing can close those projects quickly after the monies become available. And so what's happening here with Amendment Two is that change is being described in an amendment to the table that had previously just listed the ranked projects. And so if you take a look at the attachment to the amendment, you will see the funded projects showing up as funded. The unfunded projects then become available in ranked order. And so if a project may not have funding available as, as assumed going into the biennial budget, but maybe money carries over because of a project, project might not close before the end of this year, meaning that there's going to be additional funds carrying over. Those projects can then move forward once the monies become formally available, but they are then pursued in a ranked, in a ranked fashion. So that's what amendment number two does.
Thank you. To speak to it just slightly differently, it is well explained, but to just put a fine point on it. One, two, three, four, five projects in Exhibit B here. The, the, what this essentially says is all five projects can, can move forward at the same time. You don't have to wait for the Clover Creek Conservation and Recreation Area project to close before you work on Probst's property at Swan Creek. You, the Department Staff are, and project sponsors are empowered to work on all of them at the same time. So if Island Boulevard properties are ready to go, they have their match, purchase and sale agreements ready to go. Money's in the, you know, we have the money in the bank for all five of these. There's no sense in waiting for the first or second project to close. Well, we know we have the money for all of them. They should move on their own timeline as, as project sponsors are ready to close. Customer Redenson?
No, I don't have a question. Thank you. Sorry.
Customer Merrill?
You can, Mr. Chair, just to get a better understanding is if one of the five is not going to be able to close, and it's like November of two thousand and twenty-five, how is the process to go to the next one unfunded in a tight timeline?
So in your scenario, that would be difficult because now we're in November of two thousand and twenty-five, and the money's only going to be available throughout two thousand and twenty-five, right? And there'll be a new list by then council will have adopted with the, with the, with the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven projects being identified. So, so that scenario is a difficult one due to timing. The, what the code says as amended is that project sponsors are requested to withdraw their, their project if it appears they're not going to close. So, you know, typically what happens is a sponsor will pursue a project, and they can't come to terms with the property owner. And then that becomes clear, and the project is withdrawn, or the conditions for purchase and use. There, there's a disagreement in that, and that cannot be resolved, so the project is withdrawn. The only other way to have a project go away would be if council takes action. And council can amend this resolution at any time if you feel projects are not progressing in a timely manner. So the council can take action and remove that first-ranked project if you just feel like it should no longer be the first-ranked project, and for whatever reason, it's not going to close. You can remove it from the list, freeing up the money for the unfunded projects.
Okay, then the follow-up question is, you're saying we'll have a new list by when?
So June first would be the transmittal. So, so the way the code is set up is that in two thousand and twenty five, right, two thousand and twenty-five, which is the second year of the biennium, there will be a new application process, and the code now says that by June first, the department is requested to submit its new list for council to consider. So that's kind of this early adoption process of the funding resolution. And so by, by, by summer of two thousand and twenty-five, council will be considering a brand-new list to replace the list that you're going to be thinking about on Wednesday.
Okay, and then follow up on that is these unfunded projects, they stay unfunded. Do they automatically get put to the top of the list in the two thousand and twenty-five list?
No.
So they would then have to compete again in the same scoring?
That's correct.
And they may end up at the bottom of the list again.
They may.
Okay.
They may.
So they don't get to be grandfathered into any funding?
No, sir, no.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And just to remind us, when we changed the code, we the, we, we said to her, we, we, we updated the code this year. Took us a little while, so we're not following the, we, we gave the department some leeway in terms of implementing the new code and the new timeline. But in twenty, beginning in two thousand and twenty-five, it should, should begin such that the council receives the list from the Citizens Advisory Board and the department on, by June first. Council then takes the time it needs to, to dispense with it. We, we wanted it that early because we wanted to give project sponsors in the department the, the difference of the year. So from July to the end of the year, to do what they need to do to get their ducks in order, get a contract, maybe start some title review, do the appraisal process, that sort of stuff. That's not spending a lot of money, but a lot of initial due diligence so that come January one, when, when the new budget is in place, they can start spending money for purchase if the project is ready for that phase of the work. The, but that, as opposed to starting all that in the new year, and it taking nine months to get a contract in place with a project sponsor and do title review, and, and now you're midway through the next biennium and haven't really made much progress on the list. So we really backed it up for really good reason to have a better shot at closing the, the list of projects. Okay, Mr. Krueger, Councilmember number three?
Thank you. So Councilmember, Council Amendment Number Three is, is substantive. It modifies one of the projects. As a matter of fact, it modifies the lowest-ranking project on the list. And frankly, based upon the modification, the project would have scored better. And so what this, what this amendment would do is it would change the project from a conservation easement to a fee simple acquisition. It would, it would plus up the grant amount because the county and its partners would no longer be buying an easement, but you'd be purchasing the property, and the property would be converted from simply Simply a, I shouldn't say simply, but exclusively a conservation project where you're requiring. Critical areas. There's an extensive wetland system. There's some streams that feed into Minter Creek. Which has a salmon hatchery on it where endangered White River Shinnuck are reared and then released into Puget Sound. And so the the reason the project scored at all really is due to the the downstream hatchery. All of those protections would remain in place, but the project would turn into a park project. It's adjacent to Gateway Park on the Key Peninsula. Gateway Park in their master plan has multiple users, including a fairly extensive equestrian. Component to that park. Currently, the equestrian center is integrated into the parking lot where. Where there's user conflict. So you have horse trailers kind of unloading. In an area where other people are maybe getting their bike out of the car so they can go for a ride or. You know, there's kids running around because now there's a new spray park at this facility. That would be abandoned. That equestrian facility at the existing parking lot at Gateway would be abandoned. And this and this new location, this forty five acres, which is an existing horse farm, would be the new equestrian center. For this park. And so this amendment that Councilwoman Denson has put together reflects that change. There has been discussions with project sponsor, which is Great Peninsula Conservancy, who is hundred percent on board with this change. As well as with the Key Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. I've spoken with the executive director out there. And they are hundred percent in favor of this change, although I will note that they haven't brought it up to their board. There's a separate park board. And it just the timing of it didn't allow for that to take place in terms of that conversation. So there's a lot of excitement in the community around this amendment. And again, it would be a plus up in terms of financial commitment. From the county at approximately a three hundred and forty thousand dollar plus up. So I'm happy to take any questions about this.
Questions about amendment three. Councilmember Merrill.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Krueger, you mentioned that it would change the scoring.
Right. It won't. It will still let me clarify. The scoring is fixed. Right? The scoring is fixed. This project scored, I believe, forty eight, which was, if you take a look at the scores for conservation futures projects. There was a big drop off between project number six and project number seven. In large part, it was because when you, based upon the new code, there's a very. Kind of precise scoring system that council has put into place and. The conversion of this park or of this project from a conservation easement to a fee simple purchase to be used for parks. Would provide a bunch of points that were not given. I mean, zeros were given.
But the but the effect of the amendment does not move it from the unfunded list.
It still stays unfunded. It still stays unfunded. There's no process in the code to go back to the advisory body to rescore the project. So this project, if the amendment passes, will still be paced based. The funding of it will still be based upon the ability for funds to carry forward to the next biennium. That are currently allocated to other projects. And so here we are in August. There's several million dollars of unspent money. Dedicated to specific projects that may not close by the end of the year. And if those projects fail to close, that money will then carry for carry forward in fund balance. Creating eligibility potentially for the unfunded projects on the list. So that's the only way. Well, that's one of the only ways that that the project can move forward. Other ways would be.
Director Robinson might find more money.
Of course, Director Roberts Robertson has all kinds of tools available to him now. There could be other partners that come to the table with money. There could be a change in the in in the tax rate, right? For conservation futures. Conservation futures is eligible as adopted by council. At six and a quarter cents per thousand. Through the years that has diminished to, I believe, less than three percent today. That's something that could be changed by council. So there's some things that could be done to create more resources. But as we stand today, this project will stay ranked number seven and only become eligible if. Twenty twenty three projects don't close, which looks fairly likely. Honestly, there's some twenty twenty three projects. That are difficult projects and and may not come to fruition.
Okay. And then just for clarification on the unfunded project, you have two of them. This being one of them. There's one in front. The one in front would get funded prior.
Correct.
Before this one.
That's correct.
Now, who did you say owned the property?
I didn't. So the the owner is a family named Zeron.
Oh, okay. So it's under private ownership.
Correct. Yeah, it's a it's an equestrian facility. There's a history, interesting history with with the property. There was there was once a horse that came out of that facility that ended up running in. Kentucky at the Kentucky Derby. I mean, it's it's quite an interesting history. But the, you know. There's the the family that, you know, the the heirs to the to the. To the ranch are looking to dispose of it at this point.
Okay. Okay, I think I have a understanding of it. And then what this does is basically change the project from an easement to a fee simple and then adds another.
Three hundred and forty.
Three hundred and forty two thousand.
Right. And then again, as you know, the only way that the money becomes realized in terms of the transaction is if there's an appraisal. That occurs that shows that the value is accurate. This is a cap that the money that shows up in in this table. Would be a would be a cap. And so if, you know, the property comes out at only a million dollars in terms of value. The county could not spend more than that appraised amount. There's a little bit, I think there's a. There's an ability to spend. Maybe it's, I can't remember if it's a five or a ten percent over appraisal flexibility. If the property came out to appraising at four million dollars, the county could provide up to one point five. Is how this works.
Councilmember Merrill, excuse me, Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just. Want to make sure I understand on this property, it is privately owned and it is generating a property tax. Contribution.
Current use.
Current use and in a and easement on it would would reduce that amount, but it would still be a revenue generating. Piece of property. And if it goes into a fee simple purchase, it eliminates it. As a revenue generator for property tax, correct?
Correct.
And that's would be in perpetuity. I wonder if we could find out. I can look it up on what it currently is contributing to.
It's 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 a very low number. I looked into that and due to the current use assessment and there's no homes on the property. It's all. It the property is either vacant. It's it's three separate parcels. Two of the properties have improvements. There's a riding arena and a fairly modern looking barn and then some older buildings. But the valuation based upon current uses is pretty pretty low number.
And was there something about ARL land on this one or was that a different?
This is not ARL land.
Right, but there was, I saw it mentioned somewhere where it wasn't listed ARL, but it said prime egg farmland.
It's.
Is that was that a different piece?
Prime, there's some prime soil on the property. There's a mixed bag of soil types on this property. So there's a there's a big wetland system and stream system. But then there is some some good dirt as well on a portion of the property, but the property did not qualify for agricultural resource lands. Under under the county's criteria. So the zoning is rural ten.
Okay, that's why I wondered how it escaped the ARL designation if it had prime.
Not enough, not enough, not enough prime.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the questions. Let's see any other questions on council amendment number three. Thank you, Mr. Krueger. We'll consider those. In committee at the special meeting on Wednesday. That's everything for review of committee agendas for the week. Which brings us to discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray and Ms. Long, are there no administrative items for this week? That brings us to item five, other business. We have the American Community Survey presentation by the Finance Department. I believe I'm introducing Ms. DeMuth. Ms. DeMuth, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Mello, members of council. Finance has prepared a presentation on American Community Survey data for you. Presenting that today will be Amy Scott German. She is a senior data analyst on our research and data analysis team. Also contributing to the report are Trevor Bratz and Ashley Colborne, who is joining us through Zoom. So in response to council's interest on the American Community Survey data, the team worked to identify data sets. That they felt strongly. Correlated to areas of council's priorities and areas of interest. So that data will be presented to you today. In four different categories, the first being housing, economy and workforce, infrastructure and healthcare access. And then before that, there'll be a demographic overview of the ACS data for Pierce County. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy, who will provide the presentation to you today.
Thank you. Good morning, Amy.
All right. So hello, council members. My name is Amy Scott German. And I'm honored to be speaking with you today, providing an overview of the American Community Survey. As mentioned by Julie, joining me are my colleagues, Ashley Colborne, who's available to help answer any questions that might arise. Next slide, please. So today we'll spend about twenty five minutes together reviewing the American Community Survey. I will begin by providing an overview of the American Community Survey and the data that is collected through it. Thank you. After that, I will focus on a selection of measures from the survey for Pierce and our other neighboring counties. Highlighting measures related to demographics, housing, economy and workforce, healthcare access and infrastructure. Throughout and at the end of the presentation, there will be plenty of time for questions that you might have about the information presented. Let's start by developing an understanding of the American Community Survey, which I'll also refer to as the ACS. The ACS is a nationwide survey conducted by the US Census Bureau that provides up to date estimates since two thousand and five. The Bureau randomly samples addresses in every state, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico. ACS data is crucial for local agencies as planners and policymakers rely on it. To evaluate the need for things such as new infrastructure, services or programs. Moreover, ACS data provides local communities with essential information about the people living and working there. Including demographics, educational attainment, work commuting patterns and languages spoken. Today we'll examine data at the county level from the ACS one year estimates. The Census Bureau uses statistical sampling techniques to provide representative, accurate and timely reporting, even at small geographies. In twenty twenty one, over four and a half thousand households in Pierce County were surveyed, representing three point two percent of all households in the county. It's worth noting that data is available at both larger and smaller geographic levels. If you're interested in variation within a particular area, such as specific communities within Pierce County, this data can be useful. However, please keep in mind that data at smaller geographies than those with a population size of sixty five thousand. Are derived from five years of data instead of just one. The ACS gathers and shares data on individuals, primarily focusing on population and housing. Under the population data category, the Bureau obtains information about people's social characteristics. Such as ancestry, disability status, educational attainment and marital status. Demographic characteristics, including age, race and ethnicity and household composition. As well as socioeconomic characteristics like income, commuting patterns and health insurance coverage. Additionally, the Bureau collects information on people's housing, including costs, value, type of structure, whether they own or rent and utilities. As we review data today, please be aware that single year estimates for twenty twenty data are unavailable due to low response rates. Before we start discussing the highlighted topics, it's helpful to contextualize the information by reviewing a few data points relating to the demographic characteristics. Of Pierce County in twenty twenty one. According to the ACS estimates, Pierce County had a population of over nine hundred and ten thousand people in twenty twenty one. The median age of the population was just under forty years old and the median household income was just over eighty five thousand dollars per year. Among this population, fourteen percent of individuals have disabilities and just under eighty five percent speak English at home. The sex distribution is roughly fifty percent male and fifty percent female. Using the standard reporting for race and ethnicity, more than sixty two percent of the population identifies as white. With approximately twelve point two percent identifying as Hispanic or Latino of any race. Nine point two percent identifying as two or more races. Black, African American and Asian populations both make up around six point five percent of the population with one point six percent identifying as native Hawaiian. And less than one percent as American Indian or Alaskan native or another unlisted race. So now that we've looked at the basic demographics of Pierce County, let's move on to discussing several measures about housing that are found in the ACS. As I previously noted, single year estimates for twenty twenty were unavailable due to low response rates. So we've indicated this throughout the visuals in this presentation using a dotted line connecting the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. Data points. So when considering housing availability, one metric to observe is the total number of occupied units. In Pierce County, we've seen a steady increase in occupied units since two thousand and five. When compared to neighboring counties, Pierce County had the second highest number of occupied housing units in twenty twenty one. We look at the rate of occupied housing units to total units to indicate potential constraints or opportunities to increase population. In twenty twenty one, ninety five percent of all housing units in Pierce County were occupied. Reflecting a higher occupancy rate than any of our neighboring counties. This may have an impact on the availability of units for people seeking to relocate to or within the county. Another factor affecting the availability of housing is the number of units in a building. This considers units such as condos or apartments. The percentage of buildings with five or more units has fluctuated over time, but has generally remained below twenty percent. Compared to neighboring counties, Pierce County's rate of housing with five or more units in one building falls in the middle. However, it's important to note that while the total number of occupied units has continued to rise. There's been a decrease in the proportion of buildings with five or more units between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one. While this is only one year of data post pandemic, this slight decline could suggest that more housing units are becoming available. And buildings with fewer overall units. In addition to the availability of housing, the affordability of housing also affects county residents. One measure impacting housing affordability is the value of housing units. Here we're looking at the median income of owner occupied units. After the two thousand and eight recession, this value decreased but began to rise again in twenty thirteen as the economy recovered. Growth also continued through the COVID pandemic. With the exception of Thurston County, Pierce County remains comparatively affordable. With a lower median value for owner occupied housing units compared to neighboring counties. In addition to housing value, another metric impacting housing affordability is the median cost of rent. Including utility and fuel costs for renters. Most notably, while we did see a dip in housing value following the two thousand and eight recession. Pierce County has seen a steady increase in rent costs since two thousand and five. To put this in context, an individual making minimum wage would need to work ninety eight hours to afford monthly rent in twenty twenty one. When compared to neighboring counties, Pierce County lands in the middle of median rent costs for that year. Another factor impacting housing affordability is the percentage of households who are cost burdened. Cost burdened is defined as households paying thirty percent or more of their total monthly income on their rent or mortgage. This definition is used by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The proportion of households who are cost burdened peaked following the two thousand and eight recession. However, we also seize a slight increase in cost burdened households from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. Reaching thirty four point seven percent of all. reaching 34.7% of all households. Pierce County had the highest overall rate of cost-burdened households compared to neighboring counties. However, it's important to note that this story looks very different for renters versus owners. In 2021, nearly 51% of running households were cost-burdened, compared to 31% of owner households with a mortgage and only 13% of owner households without a mortgage. This suggests that renters in particular may not be able to find or easily access affordable housing within Pierce County. Before moving on, I'd like to pause to address any questions you might have about the housing measures discussed.
Thank you. Questions about what we've heard so far? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this. I'm just curious about the occupied housing. How did you, how do you delineate occupied versus like short-term rentals or sublets or all of that? How was that? Do you have any idea how they figured out what is occupied mean?
I will get back to you on that one. I know that it is calculated based off of occupied units from the surveys, but we will follow up and send a response.
Councilmember Merle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the cost burden, are you basing that off the median household income?
It's based off of that individual household's income in relation to how much they spend on housing.
Okay, so obviously if you have a two-income family, then that's going to be lower than if you have a single income trying to rent. I would assume that's the way you would do it?
Yes, so that one is a raw calculation. So if you are spending 30% or more of your income at whatever income threshold, that would be then a cost-burdened household.
Okay, so you would get the income of everybody that lived in that residence?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I'm wondering on the occupied housing units versus the percentage of housing with five or more units. Now, that was just measuring units and not occupancy. Correct. Okay, thank you, Chair. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I had the same question, I think, as Councilmember Cooper. On Slide nine, you called out for us the percent of housing with five or more units in one building. And we see the trend going slightly downward. Again, you know, you did a good job of, like, as I understand it, the American Community Survey is just chock full with so much data. You've done a good job of synthesizing some of the things that you understand to be of most interest to council. Thank you for doing that. There's just too much there to make meaning of it without your assistance. So with this one, can you just say one more time, what are you trying to call out here in particular? I'm trying to really understand the slide.
Yeah, so this one in particular helps us think about housing density. So when we think about buildings with five or more units, immediately we might think about apartments or condo buildings that are able to have more units in a smaller piece of land. So we did note that slight decrease. Again, this is just one year of data post-pandemic, so I do believe-
Of multifamily being developed?
Yep. It would be worth monitoring moving forward.
Thank you. And then my last question, I think, is on Slide 12, where we left off on the percent of households who are cost-burdened. You make the point that renters are more cost-burdened than homeowners, generally speaking. And, but you call out that there are owners without a mortgage, 13% of which are cost-burdened. Presumably, are they cost-burdened because of property taxes and utilities and the cost of that being more than their income? Is that what's, is that the profile of the person who is still cost-burdened even though they're paying no mortgage or rent?
That would be my assumption, but I can have Trevor follow up on that as well.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights. Thank you for pausing for questions in that section.
So next, we'll move on to talking about some measures around the economy and workforce. The first measurable review here is the percentage of households who are below the federal poverty line. The US Census Bureau uses income thresholds that vary by family size and age composition to determine who is in poverty. Poverty levels are different than cost-burdened households as it refers to the total income of the household compared to income thresholds, whereas cost-burdened status indicates housing costs in proportion to income. After the 2008 recession, this value saw a sharp increase, but it began to decrease again in 2013 as the economy recovered. The decline also continued throughout the COVID pandemic. This is consistent with both state and national trends. With the exception of Snohomish County, Pierce County had a lower rate of households below the federal poverty line than our neighboring counties. In addition to the percentage of households below the federal poverty line, another metric impacting economic well-being is median household income. Please note that these data represent contemporaneous dollar amounts and are not adjusted for inflation. Most notably, while we did see stagnation of income growth following the 2008 recession, household incomes in Pierce County have seen a steady increase since 2011. When compared to neighboring counties, Pierce County landed second lowest in 2021. As you might recall, housing costs in Pierce County were also the same ranking among our neighboring counties. One characteristic by which we see differences in median household income is race and ethnicity. The median household income for families that identify as American Indian or Alaskan Native is substantially lower than for families of all other racial and ethnic identities. It's important to note that the only group whose median income is higher than that of the county as a whole are those with a white head of household. This suggests that there are ample opportunities to increase economic equity within the county. The next measurable review is the percentage of the civilian workforce who are unemployed. The civilian workforce includes individuals who are 16 years or older, who work or actively looking for work as paid employees and who are not institutionalized or serving in the US Armed Forces. In Pierce County, this represents about 95% of the full labor force or roughly 466,000 individuals. After the 2008 recession, the unemployment rate increased significantly, but started to go down between 2011 and 2018 as the economy continued to improve. However, similar to state and national trends, the unemployment rate increased again in the COVID era, reaching 5.6% in 2021. Pierce County has the second lowest unemployment rate among our neighboring counties for 2021. In addition to economic indicators, today we'll also examine a couple workforce indicators, including educational attainment of individuals 25 years and older by examining the proportion with an associate's degree or higher, as well as the proportion with a bachelor's degree or higher. Most notably, we see consistent increases across both measures from 2005 to 2021, with 42.5% holding an AA or higher and 30.8% holding a BA or higher in 2021. When compared to our neighboring counties, Pierce County had lower rates of individuals with either associate's degrees or bachelor's degrees in 2021. We look at educational attainment as just one indicator of workforce preparedness. For considering the workforce, we've also selected a key, a few key industries, namely professional or scientific, which includes a variety of professions such as lawyers, architects, computer and research services, and veterinarians, to name a few, manufacturing, construction and architecture. While seeing small amounts of fluctuation from year to year, agricultural workers have remained at or below 1% of the civilian workforce since 2005. The construction field saw a sharp decrease following the 2008 recession, but has increased again since 2018 and appeared to rise throughout COVID. During the same time period, the professional, scientific and manufacturing fields each decreased by 1% in Pierce County. In 2021, Pierce County had the highest overall rate of construction workers compared to neighboring counties. However, it's important to note that the proportion of professional, scientific, manufacturing and agriculture workers was lower than in some of our neighboring counties, which may indicate space for additional investments in workforce training and employment opportunities. Before we proceed, I'll pause again for any questions you might have around the economy or workforce measures.
Thank you for pausing. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you. This is so interesting. Thanks for this information. On the slide that you just went over, are these the percentages of people who live in Pierce County and are employed in these sectors? Not necessarily that they are working in Pierce County. So they could be a construction worker in Pierce County, but they could be working up in Seattle or Snohomish.
I believe it includes both those living and working here, but we will follow up on that to confirm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Merle.
On your classification on professional, scientific, I would assume there needs to be a slash there?
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't see how you throw lawyers in scientific. So it would be interesting to see how many lawyers we do have here in Pierce County. So if anyone has that information, I would like to have that. But I would assume you want to do a separation there. Okay.
Yes, thank you for catching that.
Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. Just had a couple of questions on the unemployment rate for the civilian workforce. And you said you left out the people that served in the military. That didn't include civilian workers that work on JBLM at all, did it?
I believe it would, but let us confirm as well.
Okay. And then another question I had was for the educational attainment for individuals 25 and older. Did it take into account that the type of jobs that are available in Pierce County versus, let's say, you know, King County with a lot of tech and Boeing and same with Snohomish County, you got all these high jobs versus the county? Was that taken into account at all?
As far as educational attainment, no. Those are the raw numbers from the population of who holds an AA or a BA. It would be possible to look into that using the career pathways data, but we don't have that on hand for today.
Okay, thank you. Your turn.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. And same slide and related question was professional certifications. So people that don't have an associate's degree but have certification to be an electrician or plumber or a veterinarian, technical assistant, or some of those positions that require certification. Is that data available in here at all?
I do not know. Off the top of my head, my colleagues who are joining remotely may be able to answer that. If not, we can follow up with you.
Okay. And my second question was high school completion. Was that data that was collected?
That is included, yes.
Okay, I would be very interested just to see where that falls on this line since we have college. But I feel like that first step is high school. So knowing that for the county would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one thing I will encourage us to, my brain is going back to the households in poverty. And one thing I would really encourage us to do as we track this information over time is note some of the major policy changes. For example, when the earned income tax credit at the federal level has changed or the working families tax credit gone into place here in the state of Washington, when that goes into place, when that did go into place for this year. But at the federal level, the earned income tax credit and the child tax credit during the American Rescue Plan, those federal policies lifted millions of families out of poverty. And we see a dip here. You know, these numbers are 2021 numbers and we see a dip, the numbers we want to see going in the right direction, lower for households below the federal poverty level. So again, I would encourage us as we chart this long term that we note some of the major policy items that have been put in place, like the earned income tax credit, like the state working families tax credit. I think they're having big effects on whether, and some of these are being repealed at the federal level and seeing how they're impacting people in poverty or not, I think, is really notable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the next topic we'll cover is two measures from the ACS providing information about access to healthcare. The first measurable review is the percentage of individuals with healthcare insurance coverage. After the Affordable Care Act Medicaid expansion went into effect in Washington State on January 1st, 2014, we see the percentage increase to nearly 94% by 2021. However, Pierce County has the lowest rate of individuals with healthcare insurance when compared to our neighboring counties. To meet the average proportion of coverage in neighboring counties, over 8,000 additional individuals would need to gain access to healthcare insurance. In addition to healthcare coverage, we'll also examine the number of health diagnosing and treating practitioners per 1,000 residents, which can impact residents' ability to access needed healthcare in a timely manner. Most notably, we see fluctuations between 14 and nearly 20% from 2005 to 2021. The number of providers has continued to increase from 2018 to 2021. When compared to our neighboring counties, Pierce County had the second highest rate of healthcare providers per 1,000 residents. Pausing for a moment for any questions you might have about healthcare insurance coverage before we move on to infrastructure.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Were our veteran services and medical services that are provided on base part of the statistics in this because we have a huge contingency in our community that that's how they access their medical care?
I am uncertain. Let us follow up on that.
Okay. Just wondering what that would do to some of these numbers because they, their children go and their spouses go and so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I would make the same kind of note as I did before. Major policy items being put in place, I think are worth noting on that. You had it in your notes and you verbalized it. But for folks who might be referencing this now and into the future, right? Noting when the Affordable Care Act went into place, when the state of Washington took advantage of Medicaid expansion as a result of the Affordable Care Act, we see significant increase of individuals insured with health insurance. I think that it's worth noting that for reference points in the timeline. Thank you. I'll see other hands.
Okay, so we will move on to our final section around infrastructure. One factor of infrastructure is household access to computers and broadband. Digital access connects people and provides opportunities for businesses and education. The American Community Survey collects information about digital utilization, where access would mean that there might be internet running to your block, but utilization means that you actually can connect to internet within your house. Since 2005, the proportion of households with one or more computer has risen to 97.2% and utilization of broadband internet to 94.3%. This does refer to high-speed internet and does not include dial-up connections, for example, but it is not a rigid definition of download or upload speeds. Pierce County had the lowest rates of both households with computers and broadband utilization compared to neighboring counties in 2021. This suggests that there may be additional opportunities to expand digital access and utilization in Pierce County. For example, for Pierce County to meet the average proportion of households with broadband internet utilization of our neighboring counties, an additional 3,000 households would need to obtain and utilize internet. The next measure we'll review is the percentage of employed individuals who work in the same county in which they reside. In Pierce County, the employed workforce is around 440,000 individuals in 2021. While we did see a general D- While we did see a general decline in the proportion of residents working inside of Pierce County from 2005 through 2019, there was an uptick in those working and living within Pierce County from 2019 to 2021. However, because we only have one year of data post-COVID, this measure should continue to be monitored for ongoing shifts. Pierce County's rate of workforce working within their county of residence was similar to those of Thurston and Snohomish Counties, but was lower than that of King and Kitsap Counties, both of which had rates that were over 10% higher than Pierce Counties. In addition to where individuals work, it's important to note how individuals commute to work when considering infrastructure and infrastructure needs. Most notably, from 2005 to 2021, we saw an eight percentage point decrease in individuals commuting by car, a 2% decrease in individuals commuting by carpool, and a 1% point decrease in those commuting by public transit. During and following the COVID-19 pandemic, the proportion of those working from home has substantially increased. In 2021, Pierce County stands out with a higher percentage of workers who commute alone by car compared to other counties. Conversely, a lower percentage of workers in Pierce County work from home. On this slide, we grouped all other commuting methods together. However, among those who commute using other methods, carpooling was the most common. Data such as this might be used to help prioritize infrastructure initiatives. So today, we've taken a preliminary look at some measures from the American Community Survey relating to demographics, housing, economy, and workforce, health care access, and infrastructure. However, please note that there are lots and lots more measures available through the ACS. If you or your staff would like to explore more of the data available, we've provided resources on this slide that are also in today's meeting packet. I do want to highlight that there is a lag for data availability, which is why 2021 was the most recent year presented in this presentation. The 2022 ACS data for one-year estimates is scheduled to be released on September 14th of this year. So thank you again for having us here today to share this very brief overview of the ACS with you. I do still have Ashley Colburn joining me remotely for any other questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Amy. Are there any other questions by members about what we learned today? Councilmember Merrell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On the percentage of Pierce County workforce commuting, are there any other categories other than the ones that you listed here?
There is an other category. It was very small, less than 0.5% of the population reported using some other kind of commuting method, whether that be bicycle or something like that.
So that would be bicycles would be thrown into that mix. Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands. Again, Amy and the team, as you've noted, there is a lot of information in the American Community Survey, and you did a very good job of synthesizing and bringing to the attention what you understand to be some of the areas of top interest by the council. Thank you for that. Thank you for your presentation today and your synthesis and presentations. Very helpful. Ms. DeMuth noted a while ago, the American Community Survey is one important piece of information, but one piece of information that departments and the executive use in crafting their budget recommendations to council. So we wanted to make sure that we got this presentation early enough before we enter our budget deliberations to get a sense of what is in the American Community Survey and know that this robust book of data does exist, and we have the links for future reference. So thank you. This is very helpful. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we're still in other business, and I just wanted to note before we move into the executive sessions, I wanted to note that at the end of the study session packet, as always, is the expanded schedule, a sense of what's in the hopper that our policy staff are working on for review, and also a list of proclamations, both the proclamations that are, that members and our staff are working on that are already programmed, and for reference at the very end of the packet, going back to 2021, our list of previous proclamations for review. So if members have proclamations that they want to schedule that are not currently scheduled, but we've done them before, please do get with our communications staff. But I wanted to make sure members had that for their reference at the end of the study session packet. So under other business, we have two executive sessions scheduled, and I'm going to ask Ms. Long to state the purpose, and I believe we're going to do these one at a time because of who's joining us.
Right, thank you. So the first of the two executive session discussions will be remote, and that one is authorized by RCW 4231101I. The purpose is to discuss with legal counsel matters of pending or potential litigation to which the county is or may become a party, and to which public knowledge of the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the county. Time, before we go into the remote executive session, Mr. Chair, if you'll state the time at which we'll return. And we do have others lined up online, ready to enter that discussion with you.
For that one, do we believe 15 minutes will be enough, Ms. Long? Is that too short?
Maybe 20.
Okay, let's do 20 for the first one. So we have to go back to our offices to participate in this one with the staff that's assembled online. So that will be for 20 minutes. So we will come back at 12:45. So we'll be back at 12:45, and then we'll announce the purpose of the second executive session at that time, and we'll do the second executive session in this room with staff, and we anticipate coming back at 12:45 to begin that one, right? Okay, so we are in recess until 12:45. Thank you. The time is 12:52, and the council is back from its first executive session. We're now moving into the second planned executive session for council. Ms. Long to briefly counsel on the purpose, please.
Thank you. So this is an executive session authorized by RCW 4231101AI, and it is to consider matters of national security. And Mr. Chair, once again, before we go into executive session, if you'll state the time at which you will return to an open session, and the only item, just to note on your study session agenda following, this is adjournment.
Thank you. So I think that we're going to stay here in chambers for this second executive session. We do have a public safety committee scheduled for 1:30, which is currently planned to start on time at 1:30. And I anticipate that this next executive session will take us until 1:20 PM. And again, there's no action planned for council at that time, but we do anticipate reconvening at 1:20 for the purposes of adjournment. So we will be in recess until 1:20 PM. In executive session, and we'll be in executive session for another 15 minutes. So Public Safety Committee will start a little later than planned. So we anticipate coming back at 1:35 PM. So the council is back from its executive session. The time is 1:39 PM, and seeing no further business before the Pierce County Council in Monday's study session, we are adjourned.